I call this meeting of the Gladstone Planning Commission to order on Tuesday, June 16th. It's 6:41 PM by my computer clock. Tammy, can you call the roll, please?
I can. Commissioner Langston had indicated he would not be attending tonight, so I will start with Commissioner Natalie Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Malachi.
Here.
Commissioner Poole.
Here.
Commissioner Williams.
Here.
Commissioner Pat Smith.
Here.
Chair Mills.
I'm here, too. All right, let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Excuse me, Chair, you're com- excuse me?
Yes, can you hear me all right?
Yeah, that's better. Thank you, Chair Mills.
Thank you.
All right, I'll speak up and I'll hold the microphone a little closer to. Thank you for letting me know.
Yeah, that was much better.
Okay.
I pledge allegiance-
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
For the United-
Of the United States of America.
And to the Republic-
For which it stands.
One nation under-
Indivisible, with liberty-
Welcome. Thank you, Tammy, for straightening out the technical glitches, and I'm glad we have everyone here, except Andrel, who said he had to work late tonight, so he's not able to be here. We will begin with approval of the minutes of the May 19th meeting. Have you all had a chance to review them, and does anyone have any additions or corrections? I had one very minor one.
What correction do you have?
In the very first paragraph, in the last line, I said he would like everyone to be able to participate, but especially with this, and the minutes read "flat form", and I guess when we're watching on the monitor screen, it is, in essence, a "flat form", but the word I said there was "platform", meaning the Zoom meeting, so that's just a, you know, the, I think the person who transcribes listens to the audio of the meeting, and sometimes you don't get every word exactly right, but that's the only thing I spotted. Does anybody else have any corrections?
I do not.
No, no.
Would someone like to move that we approve the minutes of the March of the May meeting?
Yeah, I'll move that we accept the consent agenda with the adjustment as indicated.
All right, it's been moved in second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda, Joy Fields will not be here tonight, but she did provide us a planning, a monthly report, and so that's a little further on into your agenda.
Page 19.
There it is. So she indicated that she attended the public hearing and participated there. There weren't any additional land use decisions or applications to be dealt with, and looking ahead to future items, she has an item coming up related to a piece of property at 18500 Webster Road and 525 Portland Avenue, Gladstone Municipal Code Amendment. I'm not sure what that is. That's the address of the current City Hall, so, oh, I do know what that's about. That's, you should have gotten an email today regarding two possible text amendments coming up at our meeting next month.
They were discussed at the last city council meeting.
Right, yeah, they were, that's right. David Doofman, the city attorney, brought them up, and Jackie brought them up to the city council. One has to do with the minimum parking requirements on what will be the new library site. Policy in the past, well, you can read that because that's, you got a letter giving you a heads up on that. We'll look at that next time. Are there any questions about the monthly report from the planner?
I don't have any.
All right, would someone like to move that we adopt the planner's report?
I can make a motion that we adopt the monthly planning report for May-
Thank you.
I'll second that. This is Commissioner Smith.
All right, Commissioner Malachi moved, and Commissioner Natalie Smith seconded that we accept the, that we adopt the report of the planner for May 2020. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, that's done. So, tonight, what we had hoped to do was to begin to look at the, some of the work plan and the goals that we discussed back at our February meeting. At that meeting, we renewed the two goals that were established last year that had not been completely accomplished, and then brainstormed a few more, fully intending to come back in March or April to kind of firm those up in a little more depth, and a little, that we know that a worldwide pandemic would come, and we didn't get a chance to do too much of that. So, I hope you're okay with the fact that I assigned you a lot of reading and to kind of get us on the same page with some of those issues that we identified as things that we wanted to look at. And so tonight, what I think we will try to do, we're not going to really take any action on anything, but this will be a chance to begin to explore the issues that were there, to maybe schedule a time in the future where we can deal with some of them specifically. Some of them we won't have much control over ourselves because they will be coming from other committees or other sources, and some we'll try to work in, so as Malachi commented at that February meeting, lots of times we talk about things and it takes a while before we finally get to them. And the pattern has been, on occasion, when we didn't have a land use hearing, we canceled a meeting. And so I'd like the pattern this year to be that if we don't have a land use hearing, or if we have one that's not going to occupy the entire agenda, that we attempt to, you know, spend some time working on these issues that we've identified as part of our work plan for the year. I attended a meeting with the city council a few weeks ago where we presented our work plan, and they were happy with the direction that we're going in, and glad to know that we're going to be doing those things, some of which brought back to them for final approval. So, let me ask. The first thing on our agenda, on our work plan was implementing the downtown revitalization plan. That's a pretty big, broad goal, but included in that plan were some recommendations related to housing in the downtown area. And some of the recommendations regarding housing would require some code amendments, and those were looked at in the code audit that was conducted last year. So, you should all have a copy, it would have been from the July 2019 meeting. You should all have a copy of the code audit that was prepared by Segal and Associates. And at some point in the future, we will look at the the suggested code amendments that relate to housing in the C2 zone. That's the downtown zone. But that will come later, and I didn't give you too much in the way of homework to work on that, but that was the first thing on our list. The second thing on our list was affordable housing. And first of all, I want to commend everyone on the, on the commission for attending and, and being a very productive part of last month's marathon public hearing on the proposed public housing project that was, that's to go in in Gladstone. There were some nuanced issues that I think we, we were able to hear a lot of different views on and ultimately make a decision on, and I'm glad we were able to get it accomplished in one night. And I'm grateful for the work of the planning staff. You know, we get these things when it's time for a final decision, but I know that both Joy and Melissa before her worked with the applicants on these, on these proposals before they come to us, and they worked out a lot of the details, particularly the means by which the housing project could go in, in the zone that it was ultimately placed in. So, I just want to express my gratitude to you and to the planning staff for accomplishing that. Can we get back, just, just kind of informally? Maybe some feedback or a reflection on that meeting? What worked, what didn't? What can we do better the next time?
So I will say that it seems like Joy and David didn't agree on how we should proceed with the meeting, so maybe we could have ironed that out ahead of time.
Okay, that's helpful.
I think a lot of, a little too, too much too fast. I think the decisions, in my opinion, it kind of got pushed through, probably because there was just still a few questions, but to me, it felt like we were going to be moving forward, and I felt it was right for the city, but I still feel that there was still some questions by others that were really not totally figured.
Darren, are you talking mostly about the, the housing project?
Yes, I'm talking about the housing.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, as we got there to the end, I didn't know if we were going to try to continue the meeting to another date or not, and ultimately, you know, we did decide to finish in one night, but yeah, it, I can understand what you're saying. It does feel rushed when we get to that point, and I don't want us to push something through in the future just for the sake of expediency. We need to be sure that we've had a full hearing of, of the issues involved.
I agree with that. I, I don't feel like it was pushed, but I, I don't know how we need to do this, but I know there needs to be a process where, like, you know, whoever the planner from Clackamas County is, where there's a process where they walk us through so that we don't miss anything, you know, in, in the small details of, you know, what exactly this is, and I, I think if it hadn't have been for Malachi and a few of us that have already served on the planning commission to understand some of the, I don't want to say technicalities, but you know, it's just like the similar use issue and some of the other things. I think there could be more of a process because I think the planner kind of thinks that we know what we're doing, and we don't always. So I, I don't know how we get to that point, but I think that would be something that, for us to make design review decisions, that we should set a criteria that we want to see every time that we're given something like that to review.
Could I weigh in real quick?
Sure.
That's, you don't see me abstain, do you, very often?
No, and you did abstain.
But I, I did abstain on the housing issue, and sometimes other times were and there were a lot of unanswered questions there, and I truly felt it wasn't, there were enough loose ends and uncertainty in their actual plan, and that was clear to me. There was a little too much shooting from the hip, frankly, so yeah, I did feel it was rushed, and I felt that, you know, I'm not defending us or criticizing Joy or anyone else, but I believe that if sometimes when, when the decision-making body ends up in an awkward position, it's because they, they're not comfortable, and it's because I think they're being rushed. So I really felt that, but-
Well, I think, I, I got the distinct impression that whoever is going to be building this, it'll be more like how they conducted the building for the police station in the city hall. It was, it sounds like it's going to be more a design build, because they really didn't have a lot of the details in the plans.
Well, and how, who was really going to live there, what it really was, and how we're gonna-
Yeah. Not, not everything was nailed on that.
And I know they can get there, don't get me wrong. I, I didn't see anything that made me say no, but I saw things that made me abstain.
So, there was some rushing, and that was because we had skipped a couple meetings.
And had two, and had two hearings on the same night.
Well, and so, they kept getting delayed because of us skipping our meetings, so there was some rushing due to that. I do want to call attention to one thing, and I don't want to say that it's specific to the housing, because this comes up sometimes with Ferrari's parking or other things that happen in the city. We need to be careful that when we see something that we want to happen in the city, that we're quick to say yes to it without necessarily holding them accountable to sort of the things that are necessary for that to be happening, right? So, so in this case, I, I did vote no on the first half and yes on the second half. Because I felt like on the first half, we, we were letting them slip by and not provide the services that were actually kind of required. But once that decision was made, I based the fact that we said, that was the yes vote on that first part to make the second vote. But I just want to make sure that we're careful that we're not like, well, we really need housing or parking or whatever it is, and say, well, since we need it, we're just going to vote yes. Like, we still need to take into account what's actually necessary, or what, what are we letting slip by because, because we really need this thing, or whatever. Like, we need to take those things into account, too, on any topic.
All right, that's helpful.
Malachi, I completely agree with you. That's why I said I think we need to have specific criteria that is required in order for us to even review something, you know, that planning under, that Clackamas County, you know, these are the things we need answered for us to seriously consider this.
Yeah, and we actually did that with telecommunication, right? So with the telecommunication, they kept slipping by without giving us enough information, and then we weren't allowed to ask for that information. So we ended up changing our code so that they were, started being required to provide that information.
And I just think we need to do that more. We need to be more sticklers on making sure that we have all the, because I agree with you, we, we need to make sure that we're doing our job and that we're meeting every bit of the criteria pertaining to our city codes and ordinances and what we're approving.
Now, I, I tend to put a lot of faith in the planning staff for examining the individual criteria that we are supposed to be approving. When I go to a meeting, I would be more concerned about the possibility, in fact, I came prepared to deal with the possibility of some more what you would call political opposition to the proposed project, particularly the second project, not so much the first one. Although even in the case of the first one, you could have had somebody who said, you know, we have a real problem with tobacco use and obesity in this, in this country, so I don't want to see another convenience store that sells those kinds of products, or, you know, we have climate change issues, I don't want to see another gas station selling fossil fuels. We're not likely to hear that, but on a housing project, I was prepared that we may have had people who would, who would have been more negative about it. I thought one of the positive things about this hearing, and I shared it with a group that met last week where I represented the, it was the, the housing code, what's it called? Well, the Affordable Housing group that's looking at code changes to encourage more housing in Gladstone. And they were beginning to brainstorm how they're going to do more public engagement on that process. And I pointed out that we had some very positive public input on this particular project. The, the woman, Ellen Burns, who was a local nurse, who spoke of the healthcare benefits of people having safe and secure housing, and, and even Bruce Hildreth, who had some concerns about the, the maintenance of the project and the vandalism that had taken place there, and wanting to be sure that it was well-supervised so that those didn't happen again. He, I think, was at best neutral on, on the project itself, but we didn't have the, you know, the "not in my backyard" opposition. That may have been because they did their homework in advance and had meetings with the neighbors back in the latter part of 2019. But as you see, some of the readings that I sent you to look at had to do with public hearings and the people who come and try to stop projects, and how we deal and keep the political element out of something when our role is merely, or very often, primarily to look at, does it comply with the zoning requirements and the code requirements?
Well, that's, that's a tricky one, because in this particular case, we were specifically told it did not, and they were asking us to fit it in, right? And that was the thing that I was having concerns with, is I felt that they were not providing some things our code currently required. And so, you know, the seniors would normally get X, Y, and Z according to our code, but we're going to allow them not to provide any of that stuff, and that was the main thing I was concerned with.
Now, I, I disagree a little bit. I think they did agree that rather than have this just be an independent living apartment for individual senior adults, they added those services so that it would be something that fit into the zone. And, and I believe that those services will be provided. And so, you, you spoken in terms of concern that the services wouldn't be provided, but
By them.
I thought I had the assurance that there would be staffing to, to do that, and that's what distinguished it from a place where people just lived independently in apartments.
Yeah, I definitely focused a lot on the food side. You know, that they were not going to be getting provided food. That was definitely one I focused on a lot. But on the service side, I was focused a lot on the fact that they said they were not providing those services. They were just going to have other people come in and do those things.
Oh, I see. So you made that distinction. Yeah, I think, I think if the housing authority contracts with somebody to do them, that, in my mind, they are providing them. But, yeah, that, that, that's a, that's a pretty nuanced difference there. I understand now your, your hesitation on that. Commissioner Pat Smith, did you have comments? Anything you want to weigh in on this?
Well, I would, hard to believe, but I'm in agreement with almost everything that everybody has said. I do feel, I do feel this was rushed. I felt, especially the, the outside planner that works with Clackamas County, I felt she was a little over her skis when she told us she, we needed to get this done tonight. I don't feel that was her place. You know, and that's not, that's not, that's not a scarlet letter or anything, but I don't think it was her place to tell us that we needed to pick it up on her behalf, quite frankly. Just a quick comment is, because, because someone has the right to do something doesn't always mean it's the right thing to do. And I could think of a couple of issues that planning commissions dealt with since I've been here. Actually, one was beforehand, and that's the Webster Road Apartments that had bought the homes on Stone Oaks. And those people have testified to significant financial loss of their property based on a planning commission at that point allowing that to go through. And the other one was my Chairman Mills, you should be familiar with this since it's in your neighborhood, but that place just off Abernathy Road in Abernathy Lane with the Beatrice address, there's going to be 50-some units down basically in an urban forest on a hillside that abutted a wetland. That, that's, and it still hasn't gone anywhere, and quite honestly, it probably shouldn't go anywhere. And I do feel sorry for the man that owns the property. He bought it in good faith, but that was owned in 1973, I believe. And that's darn close to 50 years ago. So the world's changed a bit since then, and I just don't, because he, because the law says he ought to be allowed to do it, it just doesn't seem to be the right thing to do. And where we fit into that, I think deserves some discussion by the planning commission.
All right, well, that, that, I appreciate that. That brings, it makes a good segue to what I wanted to go to next. I looked on, online to find out, March of 1952 was when the city of Gladstone first adopted zoning regulations. They are quite a bit different than what we have now, although I noticed that the 20-foot setback in the front and the 15-foot, I think, setback on the back and 5-foot on the side is exactly the same as it was then. We've made a lot of changes, and we will have an opportunity to make, to consider making some more. One of the things I asked you all to look at, and this relates to housing, is the audit that was done by Metro in 2018, looking at a four, or at access, what's it called, accessory dwelling unit codes and requirements in all the communities in the metro area. You'll notice, one of the things on there was it compared the minimum size of the various types of ADUs in the various communities that are, that are around. And Gladstone and one other small city in Clackamas, in Washington County, I think, had 400 square feet as the maximum size for an ADU. Almost all the rest had 800 or more square feet as the maximum size. So, the two amendments that we made to the ADU code in, at our February meeting, had, the reason we looked at those was, those were things that were identified as possible barriers to the construction of this type of alternative housing, which could increase the housing supply and could provide better use of property by current property owners in single-family residential areas. What are your thoughts about that minimum, I mean, the maximum size issue? One of our city councillors commented that he thought that they, they reluctantly adopted ADU codes, but they put the very smallest size they could to discourage people from doing it, which essentially, you know, means we wouldn't have any legal ADUs if they weren't large enough. When you read that, what are your thoughts? Malachi?
I felt like our size was originally designed around the size of a garage. Like, that's around the size of a garage.
Of a, of a one-car garage, maybe, I guess, yes. So you're thinking that, that-
That's probably where they got the number from.
They also, at the time, an ADU, if you go back, because I was involved in some of this in Portland, the thinking was a, as they were generically called, a granny flat. And it didn't really have an office space or a man cave or anything else. It was, you know, you had a bedroom, little kitchenette, it was a basic little 400-foot add-on, or as Malachi, Commissioner Malachi has mentioned, a garage, or even possibly a basement, you know, an old basement where you build it out, you got the furnace down there, you create a room. Now, obviously, that is not up to date, but I've heard folks say, well, why not 1,000 feet? Why not 1,200 feet? Well, what again is an ADU? You know, what is the goal of an ADU? And if you're, here in Gladstone, I don't think we'd run into so many cases as you might elsewhere, but if you create an ADU limit of, of, you know, 1,200 feet, 1,100 square feet, everybody's going to do everything they possibly can to create that. And I truly believe that, that really need to what is really considered an ADU, I, I'm hard from type domicile. And that's my feeling, based on, you know, just lots of experience around these things. I certainly agree that 400 or 500 square feet is much too small.
Chairman Mills? I got a, a bubble on my screen. There's a citizen that wants to weigh in on ADUs. I don't know if you got that same message.
I will unmute Karen Howell at the moment, if you would like me to.
Sure, that'd be great. Let's hear from her.
Me. I thought I would introduce you to my cat, but she's in another room right now.
Karen.
Be a part of your conversation and get an opportunity to meet my council people. So I live here in Gladstone, and I'm in a split level up on Spring Hill Place. And my long-term goal is to be able to create an ADU in the desk near St. Light Base and live there myself and rent out feet upstairs. And I've got about 530 square feet, I think it is. And so I know that that is over the current square footage. So I'm here to say I would love it if you guys would take this up and consider expanding the square foot that you would accept for an ADU.
And I think the, the case you pointed out, where you want to rent out the main part of the building and live in the other piece, I think is probably a common use case for Gladstone. As people want to downsize a little bit and, and generate a little bit of revenue to help pay the bills. I think that's a very common use case here. I, I think that the difficulty with size is people- I think that the difficulty with size is people, they don't have a good size limit on like, well, what counts, what doesn't count. Obviously, if we said five thousand square feet, is that really an accessory, right? And I think that one of the things I saw in that chart that you pointed out was that they have maximum percentage of home size. I think that is a legitimate thing we could try. So I have a question for you. Based on your home, what percentage of your home would you say would that ADU have become?
It is about thirty-three percent.
Thirty-three percent?
Yeah, and it has a separate entrance, so it's fully self-contained, full bathroom. It just needs a kitchenette.
And that's what really distinguishes it from just a basement with a bathroom. Once you get a kitchen facility in there, that's when it turns into a living space and then has to abide by the codes. According to that audit conducted in 2018, there are no legal ADUs in the city of Gladstone, or there weren't at that time. But who knows how many people have a basement apartment or an attic apartment or something with a hot plate, whatever else, that functions as an ADU but really doesn't comply. So I appreciate when, you know, homeowners come and want to do the right thing, want to seek out the proper way of doing it. And to know that based on the size of at least a good portion of the homes here in Gladstone, maybe something closer to eight hundred square feet. I don't know that we would need to go all the way up to twelve hundred because for the same reason, you know, that Malachi mentioned, it kind of needs to be in proportion to everything else. Something too large, particularly if it's a detached unit in the back, might be out of scale with the rest of the neighborhood. But particularly for an attached ADU, something that's in a garage or a basement or an attic, it has to be big enough that you don't have to block off a portion of that portion of the building to meet the requirement. You'd like to be able to have it fill the space where you intend to have it. So that's helpful input, Karen. I thank you for coming.
Yeah, I appreciate hearing that that was on the agenda. I heard it may not be, but I was going to be here anyway.
Well, we have another committee that's looking at housing and code amendments on a much broader scale. There are a couple of other things in order to be, to come into compliance with some legislation that was passed at the state level. We have to begin allowing the construction of duplexes and triplexes and fourplexes in all of our single-family home areas. Most likely, that means, in practical terms, where that construction would take place is more likely to be in the lower part of Gladstone, where there are older homes and homes that are ready to be maybe torn down and replaced by something else. I don't see that happening too much up on the hills because those homes are still too new. But that's another thing that we will be looking at and having hearings in order to bring those codes into compliance with the new state law.
Let me ask a question on how that correlates. So let's say that we have a new triplex, right? And then we have an ADU requirement based on percentage of the building. Would the ADU be based on the percentage of the total triplex or based on the percentage of one of the three pieces of the triplex?
I don't really think in terms of an ADU being a part of a triplex.
No, but what I mean is, if we had a triplex and then we're going to base a new ADU based on percentage of the building, is it based on the percentage of the entire building or based on the percentage of one of the three units?
Would it even fall in the code being that it's a multi-unit compared to a single-family dwelling? I don't know if that would even fit into the category of multi-unit is multi-unit, in my belief.
I'm going to defer to the man with the building experience here. I think I agree with you, Darren, that it would be, an ADU would be something that probably we would have to define in the code is an accessory to a single-family dwelling only. And once you went into one of those other categories, duplex or triplex, you could have it in a single-family zone, but you would not be able to have, most likely, an ADU attached to one of those types of buildings.
When we had this and I first started, which was, I think, my first meeting was February, or at least when we got in with the ADU, I had made a statement that I was never able to correct because I got to talking about ADUs and talking about the city of Portland. And I mentioned I didn't like them. The only reason that I don't care for the city of Portland is because of the parking situation. A multifamily unit has to have the parking. And I really believe that if we can somehow adopt a good parking situation with, what was the gal that just left? Sorry, ma'am, I don't remember your name, but that's all. Anyway, she already has off-street parking for herself, beautiful in the home. Eight hundred square feet, I really feel very comfortable with. I have duplexes and there, I've got some that are right at eight hundred and it makes for a nice home. It's a two-bedroom, living room, small kitchen, and totally is accommodating to somebody to have as another dwelling that will help us with that. But every one of them have off-street parking. And with the new laws that are adopted by the state, I'm not sure we have any control over that. But that is my biggest concern, is, you know, not making them too large because you're going to have more cars. If you have more than eight hundred square feet, you're going to potentially have three or four cars there, the people that could be there. And that's my biggest concern is clogging up our neighborhoods.
Thank you.
Yeah, I would add that, you know, it's pretty practical that the existing environment and lot sizes and geography and a lot of things are going to affect how big an ADU can be. But regardless of that, we can't, you know, look through that microscope and make our decision that way because we are in a changing world. And I think we need to review what the legal definitions are of ADUs. There are some, I mean, the state actually recognizes them, the tax assessor, et cetera. There's just a lot of nuances that we'd want to look at. And I think we could do it ourselves before presenting anything. And I'm reinforcing what Chairman Milch just said, and that is, well, now, what exactly is it that we're talking about? Because a two-bedroom apartment, you know, visualize the two-bedroom apartment. Somebody else is going to visualize something more discreet, like our guest. So again, stuck there, but I really say at the same time, at what point are you building another house? At what point are you building a thousand or twelve-hundred-foot addition on an eight-hundred-foot house? Which one of them is now the ADU? So I just think we need to better get a little more of a finite or legal description or a code description of exactly what an ADU is. And certainly, that doesn't preclude us from making a decision or a recommendation tonight. But I think it's really important, regardless of whatever number we come to agreement on, in our size.
Well, I agree with that. I also think it's important that we know whether this is an ADU that's detached, that sits in the backyard, or if it's attached to the current structure. Yeah, there's a lot of definitions, I think, that need to be very clearly defined.
Right. And we, you know, the code that we have right now that mentions ADUs does have some of these things spelled out. One of the things that was also mentioned in the letter that you got from Joy today is that one of the rule changes we made in February had to do with owner occupancy and whether a unit was used as a vacation rental. And we realized that while we went ahead and adopted those rules, we didn't have a good definition of what a vacation rental was in our own code. We'll have to do a text amendment to put that in. But those are the kinds of little adjustments to provide the clarity that we need. So there is no ambiguity about what it is, that we know the difference between an ADU and a duplex or an ADU and a two-bedroom. Your audio cut out a little bit last, so I missed some of what you had to say, but I think I was getting the gist of it.
Yeah, you were. Thank you. You got it.
I'd like to also point out on that graph that some of the communities like Oregon City have minimum ADU size, like three hundred for Oregon City. I would prefer us to avoid having a minimum ADU size. And the reason I say that is I want to encourage us to allow for the tiny homes to be used as ADUs. And I don't want us to be limiting, you know, well, you can buy that one, but you can't buy that one.
So giving people options, again, is the way that you can be sure that a property owner who wants to benefit from this as a way of taking property they already own and making something more of it, that we will give them those options. And that's kind of the, you know, that's the overall goal of all of these efforts in improving housing supply in the area, is providing more options to people. People that are willing to have smaller homes or homes without a garage, if they don't plan to park and want to use public transit, you know, we need to provide that option without forcing people and everyone into the same decision. And that's part of the reason why the state is pushing cities to consider these kinds of expansion of options.
What is an ADU considered after it has been sold to the next buyer? In other words, will it always be an ADU? Let's just say that I, being a contractor, I buy a piece of property, have somebody who wants a duplex, I go, I live there. And then I go, I'm done, got the ADU, got it rented, lived there for X amount of time. I'm just bringing up some scenarios here. At what point then I go to go sell it to somebody who I already have or whatever? Is that always considered a home? Does it have to be occupied by the home? Or now could somebody buy it as an investment and have two properties on the one? Make it more of a duplex-type of situation?
So I think there's multiple parts to that, actually. So one, we already did discuss in the past what would happen if somebody bought a property that had an ADU on it. And I think that we also discussed the possibility of them being permitted. So the other part of that, I think that if you actually wanted them to be two separate properties, like completely separate properties, I think at that point you actually have to look at having the property divided.
Having the property what?
Divided. You want them to be two separate, single-family homes.
I think our planner explained at the February meeting that, you know, on a single-tax lot, it's one piece of property. And so even though there are two living spaces there, I don't think you can sell half of it and not the other half. It's
I agree. Yeah, no, I'm just saying that, so now, when I buy it, the property, or Joe buys the property, he's now buying a duplex.
I don't think it'd be any different like than if you bought a property of the mother-in-law's suite. Once you buy the property, you don't have to keep it that way.
Okay.
Right?
Figure, I just want to understand the rules better because that's fine. No problem.
One of the things that they discovered, I didn't provide a link to it, but there's another survey that was done of existing, to sort of gauge some of the issues that you brought up. For example, how many people typically live in a house that has an ADU? How many cars do they use? And what they find is very often the ADU is occupied by a member of the family of the owner of the main unit. They have often, about a third of the cases, I, no, I'm not even going to try to quote real numbers because I should look it up before I say anything in a public meeting. But the number of parking spaces that were added in many cases was not significant, although, you know, that varies. They surveyed and did an average, and you may have some areas where there are more than others. One of the figures that I thought was interesting was where they looked at how many ADUs there were in various communities. And the city of Portland, you know, far and away had more than anyone else because they have provided some other incentives for people to do them, and they've had them a lot longer. But even in Portland, which has way more than all the other cities, the average number of ADUs was four-point-three-three units per one thousand people in the population, which if you take that and apply it to Gladstone's population, and if all of a sudden we had the same proportion of ADUs in this city as they do in Portland, that would be only fifty-two ADUs throughout the entire city. So in a city that has two-and-a-half square miles, you can look at a, you know, an area one-half mile on each side and you would only have five-point-two ADUs in there. So the people whose concern is, oh, now, you know, the whole neighborhood is going to be filled with these things, that's very unlikely that that will happen. And the other thing that's possible in the code, and I'm not sure if it's possible on the duplex-triplex issue too, is perhaps the code can include a maximum percentage of how many of these alternative types of housing can be on a particular block or a particular side of the street or something. You know, so that we don't have one whole street torn down and turned into a row of duplexes and triplexes. But if they're scattered throughout and just provide, you know, something with a little different face on it and an option, and they're appropriately distributed throughout the community, maybe it would not be as difficult to transition for people to.
I'd like to caution us on that particularly because we want to make sure we're able to treat every citizen equally. And if you're a citizen who comes in after it's been mostly filled out and you're told you can't do the same thing your neighbors does, that might be problematic.
Well, that would be a good thing to get some advice on. I'm kind of speaking off the top of my head on that, but right, we want the law to be applied equally. And, you know, you don't want to be the last one in line.
Can you build a new house with an ADU? I'm thinking of your logic, where you're saying everybody on the same side. Can a builder come in, buy the area and put in a house with an ADU and sell it? Or is it the ADU has to be purchased, the permit has to be taken by the existing homeowner?
I would say the state of Oregon is going to encourage that at this stage, right? Because they're trying to encourage density, right?
On Gloucester, we have one that was built new that has an ADU, and it's attached.
True.
You guys remember that?
Yes.
Okay.
If you meet the building code, you can always put a kitchen and a bathroom and a bedroom in the basement or, you know, in another part of the house. And I see a lot of houses advertised online as having a potential ADU, potential rental space. Some of them are, have, already have all the elements of it where you could live in it. Some of them are, well, the way Mrs. Howell presented, halfway there, but not all the way there. And so it's just that if you want to operate it as an ADU, then that portion will need to meet whatever the code is that we require. And if we say had a maximum of eight hundred square feet and you had a nine-hundred-square-foot basement with living space, then it wouldn't meet the code if that's what ultimately became the code. So I think the answer is yes, you can have a new home with an ADU already built into it. And perhaps as Malachi suggests, that's really the direction of the future for new home construction.
Cool.
Chairman Milch? Pat Smith, I have a question. When we talk about the size of an ADU, there's a house on the corner of Valley View Drive and Jennings that has just put one in their backyard. And it has a fairly extensive covered veranda porch. You can put the name on it if you want. Would that be included in the square footage? I don't expect you to know that. I'm throwing this out as a rhetorical question. How would we treat, or how would the size of outside living that's attached to an ADU and covered, how would that be decided?
I think our code has some descriptions of that as it applies to a normal house in terms of whether your, you know, your extended porch in the front counts, you know, where it counts as far as your setback rules and other things. As far as the square footage, I think the code usually, Darren, you could probably correct me on this, but square footage is probably calculated more on the interior living space than any exterior space.
It is.
But I know that, Malachi, you've mentioned some of the prefab homes or tiny homes or kit homes. But I know that Malachi, you've mentioned some of the prefab homes or tiny homes or kit homes. You know, you can order an ADU for your backyard from Amazon for about seven thousand dollars that they say two people can put together in a weekend. I don't know, beat the whatever our current code is on that. But a lot of them do have awnings and porches and exterior space as a part of it. So I think you raise a good question. We really need to have an understanding of those because if that's the direction some people choose to go, we want to have a code that's friendly to that kind of a of a buying option of the most popular prefabricated ones. I understand.
Does an AD, does an ADU need to be on a foundation? I'm just, just another question that needs to be, is it going to be a permanent structure there?
Well, yeah, I would, I would interject there that an ADU is a permanent structure. You're going to be stick built or however it's done, not movable, not not something that that came on a trailer necessarily. And when we talk about deck sizes and other things, it really, that really falls under, you know, the the other codes setbacks and things. I mean, as big as a deck, depending on your yard, you could have a pretty good sized deck, but it wouldn't count as living space as you confirmed earlier. And so, you know, I mean, we I'm dismissing, but it goes back to we need a more definite description of, and that's the point where we're going to need some legal help or staff to help. I'm not making a motion, but at some point I think we need to make a motion that that we, or in some way, request that we get some verification. And do they intend to change the current Gladstone definition of an ADU and where are we going with that? So we got more clarity.
Oh, yeah.
And again, while we're talking about this, I don't want it to necessarily preclude making the original decision about now what's the appropriate size for an ADU, whether it's attached or detached. I don't want to get lost on that.
Well, and I was not intending for us to make a decision or certainly to propose changing codes tonight. Again, this is a general discussion of the five or six areas that we identified as things that we wanted to work on this year. And the the more extensive audit of all our housing related codes that will be taking place with help from consultants and professionals will include some of this. But I think it's helpful to 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 weigh in as a commission, to hear from people who have building experience, to hear from homeowners, to kind of know the direction that that people would like to go. Because we want to shape it around the needs of this community, which may be very different from the needs of a of a city like Portland. But and the other thing, as Malachi mentioned, there are tiny homes. I see programs about the building tiny homes that are almost all on wheels and are put in, you know, they've got to be on some hard surface, but it's not necessarily a foundation set home. And so we would need clarity on that issue, on that question. You know, and and it may be that we would have to require a foundation. And some of those kits and and prefab units require a concrete foundation. It would have to be up to all the various construction standards that we have in our community.
And I think to be clear, if we if we go based on what the goal is, we should be focused on figuring out what what rules will make people safe while still accommodating the state goals. That that should be the direction we're trying to take any of these rules.
That's good. That's a good summary of how how we should do it. Well, let's move off from this issue to another one of the of the goals that we had established for our for our working plan for the year. Malachi, you brought up the issue that that our code right now makes very little reference to some of the environmental things that that can be part of building codes and zoning laws in other places. Partly because back in the, I guess, nineteen seventies, when a lot of it was was written, we didn't know as much as we do now. So you did some research on some things regarding energy efficiency. I want to mention that the other night, thank you, Karen. The other night I attended, or yeah, I listened to the Zoom meeting of the presentation on the construction of the new library. The architect has provided some options based on public input. And one of the comments that the architect made was that because of the relatively small size of that building, they think there's a very good chance that the new library could be constructed as a net zero building. That is that it would generate as much energy as it uses. Now, some of those kinds of standards, that or the lead platinum or gold standards, those are sort of voluntary building design things that that a builder would choose to do.
Voluntary for now.
Code requirements. But take us a little bit through what you've discovered, Malachi, and and guide us through the report that you prepared.
Sure. And just to be clear, this was like very short duration of research. So obviously, everything here could could go deeper. It doesn't look like I have permission to share my screen, so I'll just kind of talk through it. So to start with, when we first, when I first started looking at this, I was, the the motivation that got me thinking about this was that I had this huge south facing window on my house and I spend a lot of time with my, my AC is on almost year round now. I'm almost never heating my house, but I'm always cooling my house. And I started thinking about, are we really doing what's energy efficient for this house, right? Am I wasting money, wasting electricity for this house because of the direction it's facing? Because of all that sunlight coming in through that giant window? And our code currently requires us to do that. Now, it does allow for you to do things like awnings and things like that. But there is some limitations on what those can be and how much of the front of your house can be blocked. So anyway, I wanted to try to see whether we could update our code to be more friendly and not require as much energy to keep the temperature in the house more stable with less cost. That led me down a rabbit hole. So if we can scroll down just a little bit. So back in two thousand seventeen, I think Les, you were still here. I don't remember who else was here. But I had presented the idea of these civic design standards. And this was because we had not, we did not have any rules regarding civic buildings, only residential and commercial buildings. And so some of the things I was talking about was maybe we could do things like solar or things like that. So the the city of Gladstone could be, you know, a, you know, showing what what's the right thing to do, like we could be the example, right? And then now, you know, it's three years later and this topic's coming up again. And so I've decided to take a fresh look at this. I did include that document as well, if anybody wanted a refresher on that. But you want to scroll down a little bit. So this section here, seventeen four four oh two oh. So it actually talks about specifically how we need to have our windows facing the south side of the building for good southern exposures, right? And that is specifically why we get the the huge amount of heating into the houses. As as the climate warms up, that is going to cause the houses to require more energy to cool off. Wouldn't be a problem if the temperatures stayed low, but even according to the, even according to Kate Brown, that is not what's happening. So if we go down a little bit further, can I just cock through this? So I started by, I went to the DLCD's website because they had a page specifically about land use planning and climate change. They was talking about how DLCD is addressing climate change in areas of land use, transportation, natural hazard, coastal management. Coastal management doesn't really affect us as much, but I did also note that their that their site included something called the Climate Action Plan for both Milwaukee and Portland. Haven't had time to review their climate action plans in depth, but maybe that is something we could try and take on ourselves is to figure out what ours would be. There was also a metro one that is for the whole Oregon metro about how does the metro deal with climate change? So I ended up cocking to Cody Meyer. He forwarded me on to Laura. Do you want to scroll down a little bit? So I talked with Laura for a while, probably about an hour on the phone. And we talked about a couple of things. So one, the Oregon standard building code, she said, are about two years behind the international building codes. She said there are also international building codes that are focused on the green and energy specifically, and suggested I start there. She also mentioned the SDC, the Sustainable Development Code, which the do, they do have a section, chapter seven, that is geared towards energy specifically. On their site, you can click on it and see example ordinances from various cities or counties in the country. And also some model code that you can use to do things like incentivize builders to put in better energy efficient stuff. So there's some model code there, model ordinances, things like that, that could be used as a starting point. She also mentioned that the person who set that thing up has got a event that they're going to be hosting in October. And the book, I was going to get her up, buy that book off Amazon, but it's currently out of stock. She also indicated that TGM would still like to work with us, but that should wait until after the housing thing. We had a very long discussion regarding Gladstone and parking. I would say that was a very large part of our discussion. Anyway, so I went on from that. And so one of the sections I looked at was the building codes. So there's a building code assistance project. Most of the stuff on their site seems to be a little out of date. However, they do grants. And they also have a page dedicated to Oregon, so there is a contact there that we can try to reach out to. And if I recall, they were also involved in some of our Oregon energy code that we have today. And that was actually created as a joint venture, one of them being the alliances, the or the American Council for Energy Efficient Economy. So I went and I checked out their site, so if you scroll down a bit more. Gladstone was not specifically listed, but Portland was. I looked at a few things. They they have this database of state and local policies. And looking at the Portland specifically, they, there are some, quite a few things listed on the Portland site. Things like climate mitigation, energy reduction, even things like whether your public workforce can telecommute. The, one of the things they talked about was urban heat islands, so areas of your city that are generating more heat and how to how to address that, how to mitigate that. So that might be something that happens, say, near the auto row, right? Incentives, low income programs, things like that. They also had a section specifically for parking code that was tailored to car sharing, so Uber, Lyft, things like that. There was a parking code specific for that. Go ahead and scroll down some more. So then I started looking at some of the executive orders that came in. Kate Brown has, there's three executive orders that I called out specifically that are sort of related to what we're looking at. This first one to be in probably the biggest one. So Executive Order seventeen twenty was signed in November of two thousand seventeen. And it was establishing the Built Environment Efficiency Working Group. And there was quite a few things that were in it. I did include that executive order as well. But just a few of the timelines that were listed, you can see here that by October twenty twenty, that's this October, they're supposed to have new code in the state building code to require new buildings to be solar ready for residential. And twenty twenty-two for commercial. By January twenty twenty, they were supposed to require high efficiency water fixtures in new buildings, commercials much later. So a whole bunch of these are slipping to April because of COVID. They are not able to get together in a room and work through some of the details. And their site currently says that some of these have slipped to April. But what we can tell from this is that at the state level, which we do depend on for our land use, right? We have the state building code that we just defer to. They're going to start requiring buildings to be solar ready. They're going to start requiring new parking structures to have EV chargers. They're and they're going to start requiring buildings to achieve zero energy in October twenty twenty-three. They're going to start requiring that we exceed the international standards in twenty twenty-two. So this is, again, this is not the entire executive order. I did include that PDF if you want to read it. But I thought it was important to call out that these are really close timelines, like these are not like ten, twenty years down the road, right? So I did look at the Built Energy Efficiency Working Group page. And that's the group of of agencies that are a part of that, the Department of Energy, Department of Administrative Services, Building Code Divisions, Public Utility Commission, and Oregon Housing Community Services. The, I went to, there's the view action items thing, that URL there will take you to a page where you can see the current state of each action item they have from the executive order and whether it's complete or when they're going to plan on it being complete. But just as one example from that, there was the the Executive Order Directive four A, which required the the state code to be amended for solar readiness for residential buildings. That was due October first. There is a link to the current code. There is a link to the proposed code. The anticipated effective date is April first. So it's not just something that may happen. The proposed code is already up there for us to review. And I think that's important because as we start thinking about what we might do in this space, we should realize the state is already going to mandate something for us in a couple of months. Okay.
This is definitely going to apply to the new library.
Well, it will apply to any new buildings that have not started construction by the time it goes into effect, right?
Okay.
But yeah, so all of these adoptions have been postponed until April first due to COVID. So that's important. If you go down, so Executive Order seventeen twenty-one was specifically around zero emission vehicles. So the reason I found this one to be important for us is that not only is the state going to be switching their entire fleet over to zero emission vehicles, they're, they're actually mandating the DEQ start encouraging Oregonians to start buying them and leasing them. And so when we're thinking about apartment complexes, for example, that don't have EV capabilities, which, by the way, in a year or so will be illegal, right? Well, as we're, as we're doing that, we're going to, we're looking at this and they're going to, the state is going to start pushing that there's more electric vehicles in Gladstone. And we don't have infrastructure in the city of Gladstone to support that. So I thought that was important to call out. They're even going to, they're also looking at having the school buses switching to electric as well. And they're asking the Public Utility Commission to start encouraging greater greater electric vehicle adoption in moderate and low income communities as well, because it's going to save money for them in the long run. So I thought that was an interesting, it it doesn't seem like land use at first because it's about vehicles. But when you think about especially all of the apartment complexes coming in or any of the build out we do, we're not in a position today to support that kind of infrastructure. So that's important. And similar to the last one, there is a page where you can go and see the status of each aspect of that executive order and where they're at on that. Let's go ahead and go to the next one. So Executive Order twenty oh four was signed more recently. That was just signed here in March. It affects a lot of the state agencies, as you can tell. Part of the reason I called these out is we rely on most of these agencies for various things that we we know, we just delegate to them, saying must comply with these various agencies regulations, right? We often don't look at what they are requiring. We just say, you know, must comply with them, right? Must comply with DEQ or whatever. But all of these agencies have new requirements being put on them as of two months ago. Three months ago now. Go ahead and scroll down some more. Just example of some of them, again, the PDFs are there if you want to look at them. The order does discuss how some of the underrepresented are disproportionately affected. It does talk about protecting like the forests and the wetlands. But one of the things I want to call out is it talks about how OSHA is going to have to But one of the things I want to call out is it talks about how OSHA is going to have to develop standards for businesses to protect workers from wildfires and excessive heat. That will likely come into effect with the commercial things we approve. Right? Because that's probably going to put new requirements on how those buildings are constructed, if they're going to be able to do that. I don't know what those requirements will be yet. They still have to adopt those new standards. They are talking about a lot of waste recovery, so like fuel economy, landfill emissions, food waste recovery, things like that. I noticed the BCD one, what I thought was an interesting one to call out. BCD is supposed to adopt new building efficiency standards. They're supposed to reduce how much average site consumes by sixty percent of energy reduction. That is pretty significant. Even outside of the net zero thing, sixty percent is still a large reduction. There's some changes to things that get sold in Oregon. They're gonna do a, what they called a rapid migration of their entire fleet to zero emissions. And there are, they directed DLCD and ODOT to provide financial and technical assistance to metro planning to help communities adjust to all of this. Which gets into some of the DLCD grants and stuff like that, right, in TGM. So just a couple of other additional resources I've provided. These links are the, some climate, like, there's the first one is the Oregon Climate Research. The next two are US level and global. And those have the most recent from those agencies. The, I think all three, no, the second and third one are both government and the first one is one of the Oregon agencies. And they're saying what the state of the climate change is and how it's affecting land use for both US and Oregon specifically. So I know I've been talking a long time, so just to kind of recap a couple of things I think we can consider. We probably should evaluate some of the code amendments that are already being proposed to go into effect in a couple of months. And see how that's going to affect us. We could look at creating our own climate action plan, like Milwaukee and Portland did, to, or at least consider what kind of ramifications that has for us. And I was thinking we could start to identify areas that'll be harder for us to accommodate, like how are we, how are businesses going to protect from wildfires here, right? But the other thing is maybe some of those new codes are going to go into effect. Maybe we can get training on those, get training on the new code changes. I don't know. So that was what I was able to get in the, in the time we had, so.
Well, thank you for investing this amount of time and providing such a thorough report. It's, you know, we started with a very simple thing, just the, the, the one line that we have, that's kind of a simple thing for a planner to look at a, at a, at a, a land use site map and see, you know, where does it, what direction does it face? That's an easily verifiable, easily examined thing that staff can do from an office on a written plan, not have to visit a site. A lot of the reason that some of these kinds of standards aren't included in codes is because they are much more difficult for, for staff to verify at that stage of the process. So you'll see a lot of things.
You're not seeing anything, are you? Okay, well, it's, it's locked up.
Oh, yours has.
Yours has. Yeah. Now it's working.
Someone needs to mute.
Was it gone for a while?
And that's our conversation being broadcast over.
Goodbye.
All right. Anyway, what I was saying, you know, we, we see, as far as environmental aspects of our code, we see a lot of things about stormwater and drainage and those kinds of things, which you know, are traditional means of dealing with some important environmental concerns. But it's helpful to know that the state is examining it, and I would hope that if they pass the law, they will provide the kind of support that they are already providing as far as housing, that they'll provide us some guidance if it comes to a matter of changing code. I, I liked the fact that part of this was motivated, Malachi, by your interest in what we could do as being an example to other cities by having our own civic buildings. You know, emulate some of these ideas for more contemporary means of
It's locked up.
Somebody needs to mute there. Thank you. Anyway, that's why I brought up the issue of the library. If we have an opportunity for the library to, to be a little more advanced in what they do as far as energy efficiency, then that will be a good thing, a good example to the, to our own community and to other communities. So we will, we will take a look at this in the future. We know now where to look. I was reading an article about even the, even the architects now in the world, you know, thirty-five or so years ago was when they a, a younger architect suggested that they adopt some new standards for energy efficiency in the building industry. And there was a lot of resistance at their national convention, and they said, well, you know, we're not, nobody's going to go for this. Well, the young people pushed it through and got it passed, and that was the origin of, you know, these, these builders groups that establish standards for energy efficient buildings. And now it's kind of a, it's kind of a badge of honor for an architect or a designer or builder to, you know, to, to have these features as part of it. But they're saying that now, twenty or thirty years later, even the LED standards are not even necessarily as energy efficient as they could be. So you're pointing us in the right direction, Malachi, and we will pay attention to what comes out of the state. And then look and see if in the course of some other code work that we do, that there are reasonable things that can be added to our code that will, that will push us more in that direction. So I appreciate that input.
And one of the things I specifically really liked, and I, and I did talk to DLCD about this, and it was also in the, I forget the name of it, the the building code assistance models. I really like the idea of incentives, right? Where we can give incentives to encourage them to make the buildings better, especially when it comes to the low income housing. Right? Because if they make them to have higher efficiency, then the people who are living there will pay less per month to live there. And so I really liked that idea.
Yeah, affordable housing has to do with the total cost of, of your housing, and that includes utilities. And anything that's done in design that, that in the long run reduces utility costs, makes housing more affordable. Maybe not the initial construction of it, but, you know, hopefully these buildings are built to last. And when you spread those savings over a long period of time, it becomes a, a cost effective thing to do.
Yeah, I, I would add that it, it's, it's a matter of scale. I, I could, you know, this is strictly an opinion here. But I look at all the requirements from the executive order. And I could just about bet that some of those deadlines will be extended because financially they're unrealistic. But it doesn't mean they'll go away, or that we shouldn't be having this discussion. But there's a point where the affordability of, you know, there's that, wherever that point is, and to bring it to the library and our civic buildings. Literally years ago. You know, there, a lot of the incentives, we, we may not, then, whatever we've done to get the approval and, and get the project going. But when it comes to, to incentives for others to build or, or for ourselves actually too, so much of, of that comes from grants and more, more so from getting, you know, tax credits and things from the government that help make it work. And you see with, with just about everything that comes, comes by us in any government building now, where they are looking for a long-term affordability. And yet their upfront cost is pretty high in today's world. And somehow they want to increase the energy efficiency and the, the programs that the government has, and certainly that, that we or others could take care of are really going to help incentivize things, because without that, there's a point where people are gonna will build what we have to. And maybe leave out, maybe hope more energy efficiencies, but because we had a meeting requirement, we ended up with a ten million, dare I say, dollar library. So it is a matter of scale, but I sure appreciate what you're doing, and I think we're headed in the right direction.
Okay, one of the other things we, we brought up at our February meeting, it was suggested that we take a look a little bit at the way we notify people of meetings, and that has to do kind of in a broader sense with public participation. I, I assigned you four different articles about, well, I actually assigned three of you specifically, but I don't know if the rest of you read them too. Some, some articles or book excerpts regarding the issue of participation in public meetings. One of the concerns that's developed in recent years, the city of Portland for a long time, more than fifty years, sort of developed a good system of neighborhood associations that could represent different parts of the community when land use matters were coming before them. But as time has gone on, that model has come in a little bit more disfavor because it was recognized that maybe they weren't as representative of the community as a whole as they should be. And, and other communities have found that whether they have a neighborhood association or just regular open public hearings, that those who tend to come and participate at those meetings, research has shown they don't always necessarily represent the community. They aren't as representative of the community as a whole. They tend to be higher income, whiter, more opposed to some of the long-term goals than the community at large is. Any project that would affect one segment of the, of the city more than another, you're going to hear from the people who live there who don't want it to happen. Even though the rest of the city sees some positive value in it as a, as a broader concern. So I just want to hear those of you who have participated, some of you have, I tried to add up how many combined years you had of attending public hearings and hearing from the public on, on land use matters that we've done, and I know some of you, Les in particular, have attended hearings, public hearings in other settings as a, as a participant. And share your thoughts, your reaction to the articles, your, your thoughts about how we can encourage good, helpful, productive input at our meetings, like the positive input we had at the last meeting.
I, I would say one of the issues is that when folks hear about a project, whatever it may be, they tend to, to not get that much information and they're already making decisions. And I'm referring to our, our citizens, residents out there that hear about something. And so we've, obviously we've improved our outreach, we have a better website, we have a better newsletter. And certainly with, with all of the modern social media and everything, including what enables us to be here right now. I, I truly believe that it is, it is, what I see angry, as we like to call them, the angry mob shows up. But the angry mob shows up typically because they weren't in the loop or weren't aware. And then we hear the other side of that, which is, well, our outreach is adequate, folks should be paying attention. But what I see over and over, and, and not so much in Gladstone, but everywhere, is that the public isn't aware of what's going on, and then when they find out about it, they're suspect. Or they get information that is fragmented rather than something that's accurate. I, I think we've seen some of that here recently with the pandemic. And not to, to go to that extreme in terms of public outreach, their lack of awareness and lack of understanding of, of, now what is this project, what is it they're doing? I would say to you that right now, if I went and walked through my neighborhood and walked down the street and I, I went to fifty houses and asked them if they knew where the library was going to be, most of them couldn't tell me. So how do we, without inviting just to show up on a whim, how do we get the public more informed about a project? And about why it's being done, or what our decision is? Because part of this participation is, the, the public often looks at us as a council or, or as a political entity, or as, or as an organization that are more planners, or we have a lot of flexibility that we don't have. So I think part of this disconnect or some I'm struggling really for the right word, but, but some of the lost communication comes from the fact that people show up and really don't know what they're even showing up for. They thought they were coming to the Greek Orthodox Church, and here we are doing a Catholic communion, if I could describe it that way. And they want to know what, what, and, and so I think it would really help in, in all of our outreach and all of our notice, like to to the public that there are certain codes and things that the decisions were, and some of these codes and laws and things that Gladstone does come from Metro, they come from the state. And the citizens think that all the decisions are obviously made by the council or, or made by the council and the planning commission. And so there's that expectation of us that I think is unrealistic.
Okay, so, so I hear you say, you know, there's an educational component to this. There's a public communication component. We have a lot more tools at our disposal now than we used to, but we may not still be using all of them. I know there are some cities where you can go on a map and look at a city, and there will be some kind of a tag or a pin on the map, and if you touch it, it'll tell you what project is going in at that address. They list all the current building projects or remodels or things on a map. And, you know, we get questions, I, I remember hearing questions at the end of some of your meetings, well, what's going on down at the end of, you know, Dartmouth Street, that, that building over there? Well, if we had that for citizens, people could look at it and find out. So if they come to a meeting well informed, Les, you're saying that the, the involvement will be improved just on the basis of having better information to start with.
Right, and more realistic expectations.
Yes, and their expectations will hopefully be more realistic.
I would like to actually add to that, actually, because I am somebody who doesn't really monitor any of the places that we publish information. I get more information about what the city is doing from random strangers in the public than I do from the city. And I have found that I have actually been, like, when I first moved here from Beaverton, I was still getting updates about what was happening in my old neighborhood in Beaverton from that area. But I never got that kind of communication here, right? So even me on the planning commission, I, I don't see any Facebook or the newspaper or any, you know, these different communications we use. I don't see any of those. And so I actually see more from like Bill Osborne posting on Nextdoor than I do from the city itself. So I think that's really important to understand.
And, and sometimes what you see on Nextdoor or on Facebook, it, it comes out of the people that Les described that, you know, that are, that are misinformed and then spreading that misinformation. So you need an official source, you need something that, you know, where people know what they can rely on and what they, what they can't. I, I don't spend a lot of time on Nextdoor, but when I choose to spend time, it's often to correct misinformation when I see it, because it, it frustrates me that people will, you know, like Les says, there are still people who don't know that the new library is going in where the old city hall was.
You mean it's not on Walker?
Commissioner Pat Smith, did you, did you have any reaction to the articles or thoughts you wanted to share on this? You've heard a lot of these hearings.
I did, I have a couple. This may be a
This may be a poor analogy, but it's the old thing about, you don't want to watch sausage made. Might like to eat it, but watching it being made is not a good process. The other one I'll throw out is, and I'm paraphrasing Winston Churchill now, who said, "Democracy is a terrible form of government, it's just better than all the others." And these are inherent baked-in, not problems, they're just baked-in functions in our system that aren't always fun to sit through. And again, I'll go back to that, my first planning commission meeting, when 60-some people showed up from along Abernathy Way, in that neighborhood. There was enough concern that they made sure there were two police officers there, too. So these people were concerned about what was going in there. And as Malachi said, they don't really understand what our function was. I mean, a couple of people just demanded that we stop it. And we didn't really, in and of itself, have the opportunity to do that. There's one point in here that I thought important, and I've seen this happen at city council meetings specifically, is when someone in a public meeting speaks in inaccuracy at best, or is just doing their best to get under somebody's skin that's in a position of authority, those people need to push back kindly and gently. But you need to push back and let people know that they, that public meetings are not a forum for that kind of stuff. Much like you said you do in Nextdoor Gladstone. And I want to commend you for your patience. I got about three views of that, and thought, this is not for me. And I'm not that back. Misinformation, and the other one, I think it was Malachi mentioned the lack of access to information. You know, the city can only do so much, you know, they publish it on their website, they publish things in their newsletters. And part of, not necessarily about Malachi, but people who say they don't know anything about it, probably haven't made much of an effort to find out. And beyond that, I guess I don't have any comments. But I do think the part about gently and professionally pushing back is an important tool, specifically in the city council, we don't necessarily get that on the planning commission. I've seen city council people check by way beyond the bounds that they ought to be taking.
And I do agree with you.
Oh, excuse me, one of the articles, I guess I didn't bring the book with me. One of the articles that I quoted, and then the excerpt was from a book written by the same people, was talk about, a book called Neighborhood Defenders, this whole process of people who, you know, because of their privilege of already owning property, are able to go to meetings and have the skills and the wherewithal and the knowledge of how to block someone else from getting what they already have. But they, they talk, I think it was there where I read somebody about a man who came to a meeting and complained that, why are we just hearing about this now? And, you know, why haven't you shared this with us? And the city had been including updates on the project in the utility bills for the entire year, but he had never seen them, and other people there had and knew them. So if you do something on a regular basis and rely on more than just a, you know, the meeting notice page at the back of the Plaquemines Review, which we're required to do legally, but it's certainly not the best place to reach someone like Malachi or most people in the community. They're not looking at that to find out when a hearing is coming up. But, you know, we don't want to, unless we're willing to do some of this ourselves, we don't want to push this on city staff. But it's certainly something where we could do a better job and explore the way other communities do it. So that, you know, the word gets out, accurate information is shared. And then when people come, they are there, you know, for a couple of reasons. Not just to complain, but also to show the positive elements. I liked the quote, and I mentioned it the other night in the meeting I was in, I liked the quote that they had from the union representative construction worker, who said, you know, "This project will bring jobs to people in my union, and it'll make housing available, and the housing cost will be so that, you know, the middle-class people that I know and their families will be able to live here." That's the kind of input we need on projects that we do, that focus more on the broader benefits to the community, rather than just the individual harm to the people who happen to live closest to wherever it's going in. Darren, did you have a comment, too?
I kind of missed the, my mind froze, and I recently got back, but thank you.
Okay.
I was gonna follow up on that, so I agree with you both. People like me are not paying attention enough, right? I pointed out because if I, being somebody who am involved, am not seeing all of the efforts that the staff is putting out, and I do know the staff puts a lot of effort out, then that means that there probably is some segment of our population that is also not seen. And that was the main reason I bring it up. Even you mentioned utility bill, I don't see my utility bills, I pay them online.
Oh, yeah.
Right, so.
You don't even open the paper version.
I don't get a paper version. Like, I don't even touch it. So, yeah, so I know staff puts a lot of effort in trying to reach out in a lot of different places. I totally get that. I'm just saying that if even I don't ever see any of these notices, how many other residents don't?
Right.
And we talk about residents not being aware, that's possibly one of the reasons. One of the things in the documents you brought up was the renters not being notified. That is something that I mentioned to Clay a couple of years ago. I don't think that was something that ever got addressed because county thought it was too difficult to do. With our Argis system, I don't know that we have any better way of doing it. But my understanding, that is still something that we are unable to do because the county sends the notifications, and they only send them to homeowners. But I agree with you that notifying residents is something that, you know, whether they rent or buy, is something that needs to be happening.
Well, we're far more concerned about issues of equity now than we have been at any other time. And that's one area where there could be some improvement. And you're right, I think the records often show who the owner of record is of a property, not necessarily who the resident is that's living there. We're getting close to, coming up on 8:30 soon, so I want to kind of finish this up. One of the other goals that we had for the year was to take a look, because Commissioner.
Could I interject, I've had my hand up?
Oh, sorry, now that you are completely in the dark, so we cannot see your face at all.
There, can you see a little bit? There. I wanted to say that I think we should reach out to the people that are wanting, I didn't remember, I didn't take down any of their names, but whatever they did for the project on Webster Road, how they reached out to the residents nearby, everybody who commented seemed to be very aware of the project and educated about it. I'd like to know, what did they do? Did they send out letters, did they have people go out door-to-door to talk to the residents?
Are you talking about Webster Road or the Abernathy apartment?
No, Webster Road, for the new Plaquemines County 55 and older affordable housing.
Yeah, that one.
Because you, when you first started the conversation, you mentioned, how do we cultivate or engage citizens to respond the way they did for that, you know, for the last hearing we had? And I think we need to reach out and find out how they did it, because they did a really good job. You know, there are people commenting that everybody was respectful. Everybody, you know, had good positive inputs. I think we need to reach out to them and find out how they did it, because they did an outstanding job.
Yeah, one of the articles suggested actually sort of recruiting people that you know will prevent, you know, present a more positive approach. You don't want the same people, you know, the people at the Metropolitan Alliance for Common Good probably have a very similar letter that they sent to other communities that are also doing low-income housing. I don't know whether Ellen Burns, the nurse, goes from commission to commission speaking in favor of the importance of housing from a health standpoint. But that kind of input is very helpful. And the, and I shared it with the group that's looking at our own housing code. Because when we go to have community meetings to inform people of possible changes in the codes here, to update them for the purpose of providing more options for affordable housing in our community, we want some of that input to be presented.
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Natalie, I'm sorry.
You're welcome, go ahead.
You'll need to have a light on your face, so we could tell you're there.
Well, I had my hand up on the little side thing where you can go and indicate that you want to make a comment.
Oh, I didn't see it there either. I don't know if I don't have my screen big enough, I apologize for that.
No, that's okay.
This, just about the time we figure it out, they'll ease all the restrictions. We'll be back meeting in the chambers, in those chairs that I see on the screen right now.
Those are pretty white chairs.
I was just gonna say, that is where you will be sitting when we do come back to City Hall.
Yes, I know, I looked at that chair during the tour. I was gonna mention, when we, the council members and former council members who were there when we were working on this, got a tour of the building. I know what it looks like on the inside and the outside. I don't know what all the energy-efficient features are, I'm sure there are some. But it would be nice to learn more about that, because Malachi, as you said, it's nice to lead the way on that where we can. Pat Smith, at our last meeting, you mentioned that you had heard that the nuisance code that had been developed in the city regarding membrane structures may not be enforceable, according to some of the folks in the code enforcement department. So I have not looked into that, we will have to follow up on that if we're gonna address it this year. But I know that was one of the other goals that we had. We had a general goal regarding transportation and parking. Malachi, you touched on that a little bit. But certainly, anything related to climate change and environment has to do with how many cars are out there. The goals for working on the downtown revitalization are to have a more walkable downtown, a more urban-type environment that requires less driving. And so, we'll get to that one in a roundabout way with that, but we didn't.
I do want to touch on that briefly.
As much time on it as we could, yes?
So when I was talking to Laura over at TGM the other day, that was one of the topics we discussed. And, you know, one of the key aspects, I think, is when we did that budget survey a couple of years ago, we found that most of our residents commute to work. And most of the people who work here commute into town. And so, one of the problems we face with reducing parking and making everything walkable is that the residents don't work here, right? That is something we'll have to think about. You know, everything we talk about, every time we're talking about reducing parking, we have to remember that most of our residents commute. And the only way that reducing parking will make any sense is if the places they need to go are here.
And that means that whatever shape our downtown takes, it may need to be, it may need to include, by whatever means we can encourage it, more of the kinds of destinations that people need to go to. So then, so that rather than I have to drive down McLaughlin to Ace Hardware, you know, to buy a screw to do a project in my garage, if there were a hardware store on Portland Avenue, I could buy that here, I could ride my bike to that. And, you know, some of the other kinds of destinations, if people could park at one place and get out and walk up and down the length of Portland Avenue and visit a variety of stores, or restaurants, or entertainment venues, or whatever things, that would make a whole different experience than what most suburban people do. What I do, at least, is I get in the car and I head up McLaughlin, and I, you know, stop at five or six different places, you know. I buy my, I buy my pet food at the pet store, and I get some tools at Harbor Freight, and I get something at Ace Hardware, and then I get some groceries at Fred Meyer and go to the gas station. And then on the way back, I'll stop at the library. And if I'd make seven shops in a nice sufficient trip, I feel real good. But if I could walk downtown to downtown Portland and do a lot of the same things, I'd feel even better. So that's, you know, that's a long-term goal we have, and we'll look at that one, too, as the year goes on. Anymore, let me, let me say that we are kind of at the end of our basic agenda for tonight. We've touched on a lot of projects, I've heard got some good input. I'm glad we had some public input to guide us as we look at the ADUs. Are there any other issues that any commissioners would like to bring up tonight to leave us with as we head off to the next month?
Yeah, Commissioner Cool here. Just that, you know, we obviously were very brief in what we talked about with transportation. And interrelated with everything we're doing is transportation. And it's, and it's not just about moving myself or my family from point A to point B. It's commerce, and as we develop downtown, where's the UPS guy going? Well, okay, where's, you know, how are we going to address the commercial traffic that's going to come, that's gonna service the downtown? Because it's a real sore spot in a lot of places. You go into these nice walkable communities, and there isn't a place for the UPS guy. You've got to go on a single lane, and I could go on forever about this. But I've been taking photographs of various vehicles that are parked out in the road in Gladstone unloading. And it seems like they're feeling more and more like, well, I'm just gonna park this thing wherever I can. And so, that whole aspect, when I talk, and we speak about parking, isn't just about the consumer, it's about the distributor. It's about, you know, it's about getting those screws down to that store down there, and not parking on the sidewalk. So we've got quite a discussion in the future on transportation in our little community. Because right now, Portland Avenue dead ends at the river. And you've got two ways to go. Over to 99 Arlington, the disaster, or you're gonna turn towards the freeway. And our traffic flow down there, again, there's a conversation we need to have.
Well, it's true, as we've changed the way we do commerce, that issue with delivery trucks and all that becomes that much more.
There are some real issues that need to be addressed. Or downtown will be overrun anyway. Especially tonight, so I don't want to take it any farther than that. But Malachi, I expect a five-page report next week, if you would.
Thank you, Les, I appreciate.
Thank you.
I've heard you brought up this issue before, and I think a lot of people think, well, you know, I've heard from citizens who say, oh, you know, we're not gonna have that much retail anymore. Everything's gonna be ordered from Amazon, or ordered from Walmart and delivered to our homes. And if that becomes the mode by which we get things that we own, then the very concern that you brought up, where do those trucks, those delivery trucks go? How do they stop, is gonna be an important one to address. So I appreciate you keeping us on top of it. Are there other commissioners who have business to share?
You bet.
All right.
Thank you.
Anything from Tom?
Are we ready for a motion, Chip?
Well, let me ask. Commissioner Mercero, I mean, Councilor Mercero, you are here, I assume, listening tonight. Do you have anything to share? You can unmute yourself, and if you'd like. Well, I didn't hear from him, so I'm gonna assume that he's been watching with great interest, but doesn't want to weigh in right now. So thank you for coming, thank you all. I will just take it upon myself to say that the meeting is adjourned at 8:30 PM next month. We will look at some text amendments to our code, and we'll see if we have other business. And if not, I will pick one of the items that we talked about tonight, and we'll look at a little more in depth then. Thank you all tonight, bye-bye.